Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the December 7th work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have a full agenda tonight. So we'll get through it as quickly as we can and as efficiently as we can, but we're going to be here a while. First up, we have a presentation of the FY 20 audit. And at this time, I'd like Keith Corddry to introduce our presenters.
Good evening, everyone. I was gonna share a few slides to better understand the results in the general fund. So I'm going to share my screen. Does the screenshot for everyone?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Should have popped up by now.
I'm here. I don't know, and I just said that, I said.
April, we're on.
I'll tell you the problem, it's me. It was me.
Okay.
I didn't choose which screen, how about now? Looking good?
No, oh wait, there we go. There we go.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so in the financial health presentation, we focus on the bottom line. That's on the statement of revenues, expenses, and change in fund balance, which this year, you can see the bottom line is $881,000. So that during the FY 20 year, our revenues exceeded our expenditures by $881,000. And as you know, each year in the financial health presentation, I try to break that up and explain the influences on how we, how we got to that number. So it's going to do that real quickly, we'll do it again in the financial health presentation. So today, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, but we'll do it in more detail when we do the financial health presentation.
Okay.
Shows us the minimized, it's in the way, the zoom screen, there we go. The use of surplus that we budgeted for F I K originally was $1.6 million. We carried encumbrances forward from the previous year of 1.2 million. And we had ordinances during the year of 1.4 million. So final budget for the use of surplus would have been four point, was, was 4.2 million. So that means if all of the revenue that we budgeted came in exactly as budgeted, and all of our expenses were expended, we would have actually used 4.3 million. So to put some detail on the ordinances that we passed in FY 20, that we had to stipend for the front line of 151,000, the breathing apparatus for 740,000, and the community center Pego for 150,000. So there's a million dollars of that 1.4 million, just to kind of bring, bring everybody's memory up to date with what ordinances we passed. So what? So there's the 4.3 million of the, that we budgeted to use in surplus, but we had some variances. We had revenue variances of 1.5 million, so our revenues exceeded, our actual revenues exceeded what we budgeted by 1.5 the, the major items that contributed to that. And our expenditures were under budget by 3.6 million. So our total favorable variances was 5.1 million. So since we had budgeted to use 4.2 million, and we had variance of positive 5.1 million, we ended up with an $881,000 use or contribution to surplus. And the revenue variances, we had the actual debt proceeds was a big item where we actually had some more than was budgeted because in the prior year, we had some carry forward of some lease proceeds which contributed to this. We had EMS did better than expected, we actually got more revenue than we expected from our EMS services. And our taxes was the biggest variance where we had almost a million, million dollars more in taxes than what we had expected. The worst ones was the school camera, was less than expected. So there's some revenue variance that we had, expenditure variances. We had the police due to vacancies mainly, had almost a million dollars of expenditure variances. And then debt service had some expenditure variances due to the way that debt was structured in that year. You can see that this is a history of our variances and we're on a pretty steady trend line. And this was relating it to our budget and you can see the revenue variances by year and expenditure variances by year. So that was a breakdown of the, how, how that we arrived at $881,000 contribution to our fund balance. This is a quick look at our change in fund balance, we can see that since FY 14, this is what that bottom line has looked like in the general fund for the last seven years. And it's come pretty close to even over, over that time, it's not had a major change. And this is the final slide and it's the slide we look at every year and it shows our target of three months minimum of unassigned fund balance. And you can see we're, we're following that line pretty closely, we're a little shy of that, we have 9.7 million in unassigned fund balance as of the end of FY 20. Again, will we visit this and look at this in more detail when we do the financial health presentation? But I did want to try to put that, some of our financial results in the contest tonight when we first see these results. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Sawyer from Barbara Cane Thornton.
Thank you, Keith.
Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon.
Yes.
To share my screen with you here. Everybody see our company logo?
Yep, it's fine, Tim.
Okay, great. Okay. I'm going to give you kind of a high level overview of the, the audit. And with that, I'm going to start with the audit summary, I go over a little bit of the timeline. So we of course started our field work on the 19th of October and we kind of wrapped up our field work of testing all the details and stuff on the 20th. Where we stand right now is we've got draft statements prepared, Keith and his team have gone through those and we're just taking care of some revisions on those, but we're on target to issue finals for next Monday. And with, based on our work, we're going to issue unmodified or clean audit opinions on all your different opinion units. Those would be your governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, the aggregate remaining fund information, which are your, basically your non-major funds. And in addition to that, because you do have over 750,000 in federal expenditures, you have the single audit and the two reports required by the single audit are also listed here, the report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance, and your report on compliance for each major fund that was tested. And those are also getting clean or, or unmodified or clean audit opinions as well. Now, as far as the audit goes with the testing, of course, you know, we assess risk based on various factors, some of the interviews we do with the staff, et cetera. And then we take a look at the different controls structures in your transaction cycles being kept, the main ones, cash receipts, cash disbursements, and payroll. And we determine are they designed and operating effectively? And as part of our audit this year, we did samples for expenditures and your water and sewer billings. And based on our testing, we noted no issues with those samples and we've concluded that your controls are designed and operating effectively this year. And then also just to point out that as part of the audit process, we do assist with a couple of journal entries related to the Gatsby 68, Gatsby 75, which are the pension and other post-employment benefits, adjustments that need to get put in. Keith reviews those and they are included in your financial statements. And as I mentioned, you know, we're on schedule to have the final order issued on next Monday. I then have a few charts, just to point out a couple of the highlights between 2020 and 2019. So if you're looking here, your cash and investment pools, your 18.9 million, last year at 19.1. Your restricted cash investment pools this year, 29 million, last year they were 24. The biggest reason for the increase there was the public improvement bonds that were issued at the end, some of the reserve money that was still held in those reserved cash investment pool accounts. Your receivables overall, you're at 9.9 million this year, last year you were at 10, so you're pretty much even where you were last year. And that number comprises that's your taxes receivable, accounts receivable, as well as money due from other governments being, you know, like your federal grant, any receivables, et cetera, due there. On the flip side, if we look a little bit here, we've got your capital assets and then, because a lot of those are financed, we show your bonds, notes, and leases payable, as well as the overall net position. And the previous slide and this slide are pulled from the statement of net position, so these are your government-wide numbers, so these are encompassing all funds, basically it's the governmental activities and business type activities. So your capital assets, net of depreciation, you're at 195 million. This year, you're at 191 last year, so you made quite a bit of improvements this year, as we'll see in a later slide with your capital outlay. And the net of depreciation is, you know, still the, the increase, but it's not why when we look at the increase of capital outlay later, you'll be like, well, we only went up 4 million and the difference is the depreciation. Your bonds and notes payable are up about 6 million. And that has to do with, you know, your regularly scheduled debt payments, but you did have the new bond issue in this year. And then overall, your net position, your 84.4 million, you're 84.9 last year, so you're down about a half a million there. But overall, you know, for a city of your size, this is a great net position, we don't, I don't see this very often anywhere. And Keith had a little bit on the, on the fund balance, so I won't, I won't spend a whole lot of time here, this is your, these are all your governmental funds. So he was focused a little bit on the general fund, the biggest you'll see here is the restricted fund balance went way up. And again, that is due to those proceeds from the, from the bond issue. And that's all reserved or restricted for your capital improvements. The non-spendable piece here, that's just for your prepaid and inventories because that cash has already been outlaid. Your committed has to do with healthcare, general impact, the zoo commission, as well as some curb gutter and sidewalk projects and stuff that was set aside, and then your assigned is for grants and encumbrances and community development. And then your unassigned, 9.8 to 9.6, as Keith mentioned, this is available for any use of the city in the, in the future to take care of your expenditures. He thought a slide similar to this on the governmental fund revenues, so I'm not really going to take anything, you're pretty much even here across the board. And then on your expenditures, we've got these kind of departmentalized, so you can see the comparison by department. General government, you know, you're pretty even. The public safety overall, so this is fire police, you're up, you know, 25.4 to 23.3. Public works 4.5, down from 4.9. Recreation and culture, 2.1 to 1.9. Your non-departmental, about the same as what it was last year, and here's that capital outlay number I was mentioning before. Last year, you were at 4.9, this year you hit 9.2 of additions in your capital outlays or your capital assets. A lot of that having to do with the construction in progress. And then your debt service interest and principal payments, 3.7 to 4.2 this year. Those were the governmental funds, these are the water and sewer, so here you can see for the most part, you're pretty much right even with where you were the year before. So you had 17.2 the year before and operating revenue 16.5. The expenses 11.8 to 12. Non-operating revenues, which are grants and interest incomes, I mean, just about 700, 800,000 this year, 700 last year, it's pretty even. And you're not operating expenses, this is interest expense on the, on the pieces that the water and sewer pay for the bonds. And then you can see your change in that position, last year you were at 900, this year you're at 36, so you're still, you know, in the black on the fund, which is good when you're talking about operating a proprietary fund for a government, you want it to be self-sufficient, so. Then the last couple of things here, I just have some, you know, required communications that were required to tell you about. So we issue our engagement letter and a planning memo that kind of lays out all the things we need. I told you about the unmodified opinions, no new accounting policies this year. Because of the COVID pandemic, a lot of the new Gaspys that were slated to start taking effect in 2021 have now been pushed back to 22. So we'll keep an eye on those as we go forward, but right now, no, no major impact coming down the road for you. There were no uncorrected misstatements, meaning that, you know, everything that we got from Keith and his, his team, we didn't have any adjustments that we might have thought might have been needed that weren't made. Everything is in the financial statements already. And our proposed audit adjustments, as I mentioned, where we help with the Gatsby 68 and Gatsby 75 entries, there were nothing besides those entries, but they are included in your statements. Mentioned no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified in your internal controls or with your federal programs. And then the big one everybody likes here is fraud and illegal acts. Based on our audit procedures, we're happy to tell you, we are not aware of any fraud or illegal acts that have come to light from our testing. So that's kind of a brief audit overview of the 20 audit. It was a pleasure to be back working with the city this year, and like I said, we're on target to get the finals issued for you for next Monday's meeting, we'll have a final PDF out to everybody. With that, does anybody have any questions for me based on the, the audit?
Jack, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you, Tim, I'll call on the council members now to see if they have any questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No, no questions or comments, just a great effort. Keith and your team always doing a great job, always standing on top of things and we welcome back Barbara Cane Thornton for doing our audit again this year, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. April?
No questions or comments, and as I said, I always concur with Mary, said they'll need to reiterate the same thing.
Thank you, thank you, April, Michelle?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I, I will say that we're getting spoiled. We really are, Keith and his team have done a remarkable job as they always do. But I remember my first audit and it wasn't, it wasn't as clean as this. And to have no comments is, is pretty rare. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is this the third year in a row or fourth year in a row, we've had no comments, Keith?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, that's fantastic, so thank you again. Tim, thank you and your crew, and we look forward to seeing you next week at the meeting.
If anybody does have any questions between now and then, you know, if you want to run them through Keith beforehand, please do. Otherwise, I can entertain questions as well next week.
Great, thank you, thank you, Tim. Next up on the agenda, we have a text amendment to allow single-family dwellings in light business and institutional zones. And our development and city planner Ann Roan will bring us through that, lead us through that.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, so this is a text amendment that has already been to the planning commission and Commissioner Heath was there for that, and it was given a positive recommendation. This is to allow a single-family dwelling units, only one, or, you know, only not multiple, not to encourage multiple family dwelling units. This was brought to the commission because of, of one property, and so we're just trying to make it correct. It is in a property that exists in a light business and institutional zone. And it's always been a residential unit and so I don't think it's I think it's it should get a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, and this, just to reiterate that this, this dwelling unit already exists.
Oh yes, I'm sorry, it already existed and it's always existed as a single-family dwelling unit.
Thank you, questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments, I support the amendment.
Thank you. Mrs. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have none as well, mine were answered the planning commission, so we'll, we will move this forward, Mrs. Nichols for next week.
Thank you.
And you have another one, which is a text amendment to allow medical office slash clinics as a permitted use in shopping center zone.
Yes, so this is another one that, another text amendment that came in. Those medical offices are not permitted in shopping centers and and I, this is a proposal that came in and it wasn't permitted, so it has to go through a text amendment to be allowed. It's a plasma medical office, so.
And this was, went to the planning commission as well and was?
Oh, it did, I'm sorry, yes, it did, and it got a unanimous approval.
Right. Thank you, any questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
No, again, I, I support this and I support moving it forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson?
No questions, no comments, move it forward.
And Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments, move it forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Nichols will move this forward for next week as well. Thank you, Ms. Roan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have an ordinance accepting grant dollars for E S G for hazard pay and housing homeless manager. Christine Chestnut, I think I saw her name on here.
I'm here.
Okay, I see you, you're a little dark there.
I apologize, I'm in a, I'm in my car, I'm sorry.
You're not driving though, are you?
I am not driving, no, no. So this is grant funding that's being provided by the emergency solutions grant COVID fund. That is money that we already, the emergency solutions grant is something we've received for a long time now. That funds the homelessness program of Joe's, part of Joe's salary, and we get some housing money. The Somerset County Health Department provides that money through HUD to us and they sent us a letter stating that Joe and I qualified for $2,000 in hazard pay for work completed from March, it might be March 3rd, maybe March 5th through June 30th of this year that's already passed. They contacted us and said that we were the only ones that qualified because we continued to work the entire time where other agencies had shut down and we're not meeting with the public. So out of the entire COC, Joe and I were the only ones that qualified for these funds. They want the money to be split equal, they said we could do it however, but my suggestion would be, it's be split equally between Joe and myself, we have both worked crazy amount of hours during COVID to help the homeless community, so that's just what it's for, the money will be, the city will have to front the money and then the grant would reimburse, I would just submit an invoice and they would reimburse that money back to the city. So that's all that that money is, that's what that money is to be used for. So it's for work that's already done, yep.
Thank you very much, you guys do a great job and you, you've done a great job and you know, for first-line workers, you're right up there and just please continue to be careful. We're not out of the woods yet and we appreciate whatever you do. I'll see if any of the council members have any questions, Mr. Boda?
Any question, do we do work in Somerset County? Or is it just they need to give it to somebody?
No, so how it works is the Somerset County Health Department is the lead agency for all three counties. So all of us that work in homelessness receive money through the Somerset County Health Department. So they hold all of the money that comes from HUD and then they disperse it between the agencies accordingly. So they're just the lead agency, that's the pass-through for the money that comes from HUD. They started doing that to, I think 2018 is when that started, that HUD sent the money to Somerset and then Somerset dispersed it accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda, Mrs. Jackson? You're muted, April.
I don't have questions, but I do have some comments. Christine, I'm Ari, you're doing such a great job. I'm dealing with the homeless, I've worked beside you a couple of times with them and you do an awesome job. And I know the city of Salisbury is proud, continue to keep doing what you're doing because your efforts sit Salisbury right on the map, so continue because the homeless need us, so. And you're not afraid, you're just a daredevil and I love it, so continue doing your good work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
I just want to co-sign what April just said, I mean, that's, that you guys do amazing work. And I, I wish you could get even more than this. You know, you all deserve it, you've been working double, triple, quadruple time, especially since the pandemic hit. And, and I just hope you guys know how much we appreciate you.
Thank you, Michelle. Well, then I, we'll move this forward, Mrs. Nichols? Thank you.
Thank you to the council for all.
Thanks again.
Thank you to all of the council for all your support, Joe and I greatly appreciate it, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next, we have a budget amendment to fund vehicle for Swift, one of my favorite programs, Chief Tell.
Good evening, Swift is one of my favorite programs also. So what you have here is the ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $27,000, $27,310 and approving a budget amendment to the FY 21 grant fund to appropriate these funds to purchase a 2020 Subaru Outback. As you're aware, the Wycomico County Health Department received a direct allocation of funds through the federal coronavirus relief fund to help support emergency medical response expenses that are related to COVID. As a result of this funding, we submitted a request for their consideration to purchase a 2020 Subaru Outback to serve as the Salisbury-Wycomico Integrated First Care Team vehicle. Currently, the team utilizes a 2006 Chevrolet Suburban for its mode of transport in response to take care of the Swift patients. This 14-year-old vehicle is at the end of its life cycle, sometimes difficult for patients to gain access, get in and out of the vehicle due to its height. The fuel economy is not the greatest and sometimes it's mechanic- The fuel economy is not the greatest and sometimes it's mechanically unreliable. This new vehicle will provide a lower platform to better facilitate getting in and out of the vehicle. Numerous built-in safety features to help protect both patient and providers and will be highly mechanical, reliable. And will obtain nearly four times the fuel efficiency. And the total cost of the project was $27,310.
Fantastic. Nice job again, chief. Mr. Boda, comments or questions?
No, thank you. It's, it's great to see we were able to get this and like you said, I think it's going to help a lot and the Outback is a really good size for people to get in and out of. So I can imagine the Suburban being a little difficult. So thank you, chief. Keep up the good work.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, chief, for all you're doing. And unlike me, the Outback would work other than the Suburban. So continue to do your great works as well. We thank you for all you do.
And Mrs. Gregory?
Just co-signing what they're saying as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. Then we will move this forward. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I have a great team.
You certainly do. Next up, we have a resolution to amend the employee handbook. And let's see, I see Jeannie's on the call. Jeannie Lloyd will walk us through that. Good afternoon, Jeannie.
Good afternoon. I hope everyone's doing well. This is a very tiny, but very large change to our employee handbook. Currently, we request that employees give us two weeks' notice. And provided they complete that two weeks' notice, they leave in good standing. But as you know, with the COVID and with additional opportunities during that two weeks for possible catastrophic accidents, we'd like to be able to change our employees from their regular full-time to at-will employees. A non-at-will employee would be someone who came off of probation. And we now have said, if we are going to separate you from us, we do it. That means that you would have to have that happen for cause. We, we're not looking to do that. What we're looking to do is to be able to accept the resignation effective immediately in lieu of that individual completing that entire two weeks. Now, if they are someone who is on probation, we would just, you know, cut them loose. There would be no further pay. But because they gave us two weeks' notice, they would leave in somewhat good standing. If you're a new employee, you're already at-will until you come off of probation. If you're an individual who's on some type of work or disciplinary probation, more than likely, if you're giving us notice, it's because you doubt if you're going to be able to come off of that probation. So at that point in time, we want to be able to just accept the application or the resignation in lieu of you completing that two weeks. That two weeks exposes us to what could possibly be catastrophic workers' comp accidents. It could also expose us to additional direct exposure with COVID. And we would like to be able to also, when we have a tenured individual who is providing us, who is not on a probation of any kind, to be able to move them into a less hazardous job. If we have police officers that are out there and they're riding in cruisers, could interact with the public, get into some type of altercation, we'd like to be able to perhaps move them out of that rolling vehicle, maybe into a dispatch situation where there's less opportunity for a catastrophic injury. One catastrophic injury on our workers' compensation is carried as part of our experience rating for almost four years. Yeah. So it's important that we have this changed to move someone to an at-will so that it's not looked upon as though we have to fire someone, you know, for, for cause. Because that's not really what we're doing. And if you're a tenured individual, you are in good standing. Your job is very dangerous or it's hazardous and there's no other less hazardous position to put you in. We may be able to cut you loose right then. We're going to pay you your two weeks' notice. You're going to leave in good standing. All we've done is reduce the liability.
All right, for, I will open it up for questions, but I have two right, right away that I don't want to forget. When you say tenured, you mean non-provationary?
Correct.
Okay. And this, what you're describing only applies to the two weeks following their notification?
Correct.
Okay. Those are my questions. Mr. Boda, questions?
No, I, I think this, this is wise, as you explained. Because it can, again, it's, you know, reduces the risk and and, you know, if you have situations where there's something potentially malicious could be done, you know, it reduces us from that risk as well. So I support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions. I support it.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions.
Thank you. I, I do, I too support it. Mark, any, any questions from you or any comments?
No, no, I think, I think this is the fair thing to do and it'll, and it gives all the discretion here to the city, which is important. The city has to be able to decide whether that person should stay in the job for those two weeks or, or have to be removed for security or whatever reason.
Got you. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Nichols will then move this forward. We have consensus. Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you all. Have a, have a great evening.
Yeah, be safe.
I will. Thank you.
Next up, we have a budget amendment to fund the Truitt Community Center. Mr. Kitchrow, deputy city administrator, will handle that, I think.
Yep. Thank you all. So last spring, we came before you all to do a budget amendment for the Truitt Community Center where we received a grant and from, on the state capital projects grant for $100,000. And we did a budget amendment to help with the local match. So that got us to the asking price of $200,000. Since this spring, though, and I probably due to COVID, the state has been somewhat unresponsive with expeditiously getting us the grant funding, that $100,000 that, that they had granted us. We did, there was an agenda item for this on, in September on their Board of Public Works, but we've still not received a signed grant agreement back from the state or the funding. Now, the issue that it's posing to us right now is we did not, we assumed last spring that we would be able to settle on the property and own the Truitt Community Center and move forward. So we did not budget reoccurring rent fees and some of the other ancillary fees. So we're already have spent in FY21 or have been billed over $14,000 in fees for rent when we're trying to settle on this property. So we're requesting to expedite the process is to go ahead and do the budget amendment for $100,000, requesting it from surplus to get us to the $200,000 so that we can settle and then be reimbursed from the state as they move this forward. Not the way we typically operate with, with the reimbursement, but we're, right now it's costing us almost $2,200 a month sitting on our hands. So this is, we talked about it with Kiki, she's not here, but we thought this would be an appropriate way to move forward to instead of just continuing to bleed cash monthly. And Julia can add additional comments if she'd like to on kind of where we're at with the state at this point.
The only thing I would add is to get it on the Board of Public Works agenda because of COVID, we reached out to the governor's office. They were able to expedite things for us. And so we've reached out again to get some clarity on sort of our two paths forward here. So we're hoping for some news this week. But I think just due to COVID, everything has slowed down. And so we're just trying to make the, the best of our options here and to, like Andy said, not pay for things that we don't need to pay for.
So, so the way it tees up, President, is if we do get a, within the next, before our next couple of meetings, we do final passage, if this was to move forward, if we did get our signed grant agreement and/or payment, more likely the grant agreement, we would not have to do the, we do, we wouldn't have to do a budget amendment because that budget amendment has already existed using, using the grant. I don't think we would have to come before, before you again. So we wouldn't be using surplus in that, in that same capacity. It's really.
If we, if we, just from a practicality point of view, two questions. First, do we still have a verbal commitment from them that they're going to do this?
Yes, it's been approved by the Board of Public Works. We're just waiting for that final document that says now you can spend the money. And we haven't gotten it for whatever reason. But yes, I think they're good for it.
Okay. The second, and the second question is, if we go ahead and spend the money and then get the $100,000, the $100,000 we pay goes back into surplus?
That's the idea, but we're also waiting on confirmation for them to say that that's okay, but they so we're going down both, both tracks and seeing which one gets us there faster. But we won't obviously spend the money until we get confirmation on if we can spend it and get reimbursed.
Okay. Okay.
We weren't trying to delay this any further and understanding it takes three sessions to move this along. We were hopefully having this in our back pocket if we don't move forward. We, our landlords are getting a little bit anxious to move off the property. They actually have other local nonprofits and organizations interested in buying the property if we're going to continue to sit on our hands with it. So we're just trying to move it forward. We've spent upwards of almost $50,000 on some repairs and are starting to move forward. We'd like to finalize this.
Okay. Questions from other council members? Mr. Boda?
No, I, I support moving this forward and at least having a path to be able to execute this contract.
Ms. Jackson?
I support it, but I just want to be reassured that we will receive this grant money. That's my only.
Either way, we're not going to be spending any money until we hear from the state.
Well, you said you're spending how much? $2,200 a month?
We spend $2,200 a month right now in rent for a property that we basically owned last May through a sale of contract. We just haven't settled yet in six months. So we have to keep paying rent because we haven't settled and taxes and other bills. So you doing the fuzzy math?
Yeah. I'm doodly.
It's about $14,000 overall, counting taxes and six months of.
It's, it's for the community. So move it forward.
Thank you. Michelle?
Move it forward. Let's get this done.
Okay, thank you. I concur. We'll move it forward. Mr. Nichols, we can get this on the agenda and start the ball rolling since it's going to take us a little while. Okay, next up, we have a budget amendment funding for air purifiers and PPE distribution.
Good evening, council. So much, the exact same thing that Chief Toll was here before you today. The city to the health department and asked for some dollars to purchase air purifiers for city office buildings, smaller spaces that don't have a lot of airflow. So 20 of those and then approximately $20,000 in adult masks, kids masks, hand sanitizer, and then cones and tables to help with our public outreach events through the Vulnerable Populations Task Force. And the health department said yes. And that's all the, the CARES dollars that were allotted to us many months ago that have to be spent in a few weeks. So we're, we're really appreciative of the health department for, you know, allowing us to purchase these items and hopeful that you all are moving forward as well.
You, questions? Mr. Boda?
No questions. Great job on, on getting this and I support moving it forward.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions. Move it forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions. Move it forward.
One, just one comment. Could we make sure and check with the air purifiers about the filters? That they match the ones that were recommended by that group of that worked with the Greater Salisbury Committee and, and sent it to the governor's office? Because they, they did a lot of homework on this.
Sure. I will check with, with Bill Pettit at Allen and Shree. That's who did all that work to make sure.
Thank you. And I'm, as well, I want to move this forward. So Mrs. Nichols, we have another one to get moving. And then we have accepting grant dollars from GOCCP for the purpose in exploring predictive policing. Chief Duncan? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. How is everyone today on this Pearl Harbor Day, right?
Yep.
Excellent. So this is a request to accept grant funding from GOCCP, Governor's Office of Crime, Youth and Victim Services, actually now, to continue a project that our own city IT has been working on for the past year and would like to continue it. John O'Brien in our IT department worked with an individual, a data scientist here locally to work on deep machine learning as far as what they might look like here, specific to our city. GOCCP at the time had funded that grant research. It was a success in that it was a proven method locally here for us. And GOCCP wanted to further that along by incorporating some University of Maryland data scientists to take up where Grace had left off on the project and continuing it forward and introduce larger data sets to the process to continue the results that they were receiving, which were very positive. That is, this grant is for $100,000. $80,000 would go to the University of Maryland professors and their staff for the work that needs to be done at that location at that level. And approximately $20,000 has been earmarked for SPD for administrative support should they need further assistance from us with our data.
Great. Sounds like a great program. Mr. Boda, questions?
No questions. Support moving this forward.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I support moving this forward.
Thank you. This is Gregory?
No questions.
Thank you. Chief, I have, am I wrong? Or about four years ago, didn't we have this at one of the presentations to the council? Maybe it was five years ago.
Right, about five years ago. You're not wrong. Your memory serves you well.
So this is, this is like the upgrade or finishing touches to that, more sophisticated?
The program that we were using five years ago and continue to use is, is fine. It's working well for us. What we're trying to do is create a program that's specific to the city of Salisbury, something that we could have control over and, and move forward from there. The, the, the data program that we're using right now is called Fred Bowl. And it's, it's working well for us. We're able to prevent crimes from happening. But again, it's, it's an off-the-shelf But again, it's, it's an off-the-shelf version and we're looking now more for something that is specific to our city.
Fantastic. I support it as well. So we can, we can move this forward. Maybe at, at some point, we could get a little bit of a demonstration of it once it gets in and because I remember it was, it was really interesting when you, when you and some of the statistics that were from other areas were kind of remarkable about the ability to say between here, this, this time and this time, you can almost count on something happening in this area. And I bet that's kind of, that's kind of remarkable, really.
And our idea is, and this is what the algorithm that we're using right now is to have resources in place to prevent the crime from happening. And we've been moving, moving along at a, at a good steady pace in in making that happen by following the guidelines.
Fantastic. Well, good luck. Congratulations with the thing. We're going to move it forward and look forward to seeing what the results are.
Great. Thank you so much.
And you're on again. You have a presentation of the Justice Criminal Justice Reform Task Force.
I do, and have a PowerPoint presentation here. And thank you to our city administrator for running the PowerPoint for me. So this is a, I've got with me this evening Captain Howard Drew. The two of us are going to be presenting information to you all and hopefully entertaining any questions that you might have. So Julia, if you can move us forward to our, our next slide. This task force was really generated based off of the breach in our property room that we discovered late last winter. And it was designed to help rebuild trust in the agency after that breach was discovered. Now, after May twenty-fifth of this year with the murder of George Floyd, the task force took on a different type of a shape and the goals moving forward from May were to create an area where our community members could participate to take a look and maybe potentially update policy. An opportunity for us as an agency to educate the community and then, of course, to create good, strong working relationships with those community members. So those were the kind of the large goals. We, the city admin staff out of the mayor's office after May collected over two hundred applications from individuals who are interested in serving in this task force. From that, twenty-six members of our greater community, inside and outside the city, were selected to serve on this task force. And as you can see, we've had individuals representing the business community, faith-based community, academia, individuals with industry-related experience, neighborhood members, activists and advocates are all members of this group of this task force. Salisbury Police Department has also dedicated seven sworn numbers to participating in this task force and essentially those seven members, both the captain and I are included within that group of seven. We are, we are the, the, the knowledge base, the resource base for the task force members as they move through their process. The first meeting was back on September fifteenth of this year and we had twenty-two members participating. That particular meeting was facilitated by the Director of Tri-Community Mediation. That was Michelle Ennis. And she worked to make sure that there was an inclusive environment. You had twenty-two different individuals, all with different viewpoints, as any task force will have. They come in, you know, with, with different types of agendas on mind and different passions and reasons for being present. And with the facilitation of tri-community mediation, everyone was, was heard. That particular meeting was started off with everyone, including law enforcement, being able to share experiences, their first memory of an experience of where they interacted with law enforcement. Julia, next slide, please. So we had this large group of members on this task force and the, the best way to kind of break down the work was to create some subgroups. And these subgroups were created based on what the applicants indicated that they were interested in working on. So we had five of them all together, Officer Wellness, User Force, Implicit Bias, Mental Health Calls for Service, and Recruitment and Retention. These, these subgroups are working to gain more information and education into each subject. They then bring that, whatever they garner from the, the subcommittee meetings, they bring that back to the main task force for discussion and consideration. And eventually, at the end of this process, the task force is going to take all of that work and then present recommendations to the mayor's office, which could include policy change, better, the institution of better resources, provision of better resources for the community, for the agency, recommendations concerning training, different types of training, maybe better training, and twenty-four hour resource, resources to support mental health-related issues here within our public. You'll notice the asterisks that I placed next to recruitment and retention. This was because this is actually not a work group, believe it or not. Recruitment and retention did not generate enough interest from our task force for the group to stand alone. So we made a decision to address it as a larger issue. Once the, once the work on the subgroups has been completed, it'll be something that the entire task force will take a look at. Next slide, please. So the, the main group has met on three separate occasions. You can see up there, September fifteenth, October fourteenth, and November eleventh. Our fourth meeting is scheduled for later this week as a large group. The meetings are all conducted via Zoom. They're open to the public. Anyone can observe. You simply need to go on the City of Salisbury's main website page. Look for Boards and Commissions and you can follow the links from there as to when the next meetings are scheduled and the link to join in on the public Zoom. The committee meetings have been held so far in October, November, and December. Our first mental health meeting, we had a little bit of a communication gap, so we weren't able to gather for that meeting, but the teams have been working since then to make sure that they come together and meet and work on issues that they feel are important. On December ninth, the large group will be meeting one more time for the year. The task force members made a decision to attend the Citizens Police Academy so that they could obtain additional insight and information. It's become very clear, even with seven sworn Salisbury police officers serving as resources for this group, that they had a lot of questions, which was encouraging. They have, they have a lot of education that they realize that they want to participate in. So we're going to move forward and they've all agreed to participate in the next Citizens Police Academy, which is scheduled for, start date is scheduled for January thirteenth and it'll go through April seventh. Next slide. So, so far to date, since the beginning of the task force itself, we've had some accomplishments and most notably would be in the area of mental health. There was a meeting where we had Mobile Crisis present. We connected Mobile Crisis to the council so they could present information on who they are and what we do. And since then, SPD has met with Mobile Crisis on a weekly basis. The Command Group has been meeting with their Command Group, our counterparts essentially, on a weekly basis to further our relationship there and improve partnerships. Since October twenty-ninth, Salisbury Police Department has reached out a hundred and eleven times to Mobile Crisis. They have responded and assisted us on sixty-six separate occasions. Twenty-seven times they were unable to respond. And that could have been for a host of reasons, including the client that we were working with might have received alternate services or they might have had some staffing constraints or there might have been some reason where they were unable to respond. In eighteen instances, they actually conducted follow-ups with our clients so that, you know, we made sure that, that services were being met there. Another kind of major accomplishment, at least from the law enforcement perspective, is the information sharing and kind of the ability of this task force group to develop an internal understanding of, of Salisbury Police Department and what that means, law enforcement itself and the services that we provide. So instead of meeting twice monthly, we now have members of our task force meeting once a week while they attend the Citizens Police Academy. We had our, the members of our seven sworn members have established ride-alongs for the task force members, although that had to be suspended due to COVID nineteen concerns. And certain members of the task force, specifically the, the work groups are now on their own accord, they're purchasing the, the readings that we use for promotional testings, the outside reading and literature that we use for promotional testings for our, for up-and-coming supervisors. I will tell you, and certainly Captain Drew can attest to this, the there have been some really difficult conversations that, that we have had. And of course, you know, when you're working with so many personal experiences coming to the table, so many different personalities and concerns and areas of expertise. You know, you, you can imagine the challenge that, that comes with that. But the, the seven, the seven members of FPD and the, and the twenty-two members of the working task force have worked very hard to, to keep things on forward progress. Cap, did I leave anything else out? Would you like to add anything to that?
I'll see if I think you covered it pretty well.
Okay, are there any questions that I can answer for the council?
Thank you, Chief. I'll open the floor to the council now and pull on each of them if they have any questions or comments. Mr. Boda?
First, I thank you for, for, for doing this and organizing this. Grateful to Michelle Ennis because she's a great resource in our community. She always does a great job. Especially I've always, I've seen her at times when there's been, you know, fifty, sixty people in a room throwing out ideas and somehow, some way she comes out with the gist of what everybody was trying to say. I remember, you know, in two thousand and fifteen, we had a series of discussions in our community. I went to every meeting and Michelle was at every meeting taking notes with her, you know, she's phenomenal. So I'm great to see she's a part of this. And so I, I'm looking forward, you know, great to see that there's some progress on the mental health side of it. I, I do think that that's a big piece of some of the issues that, that law enforcement deal with and Mobile Crisis is, is, is a great asset. And they're, you know, they, you know, they cover a large territory too. So they're not just in Salisbury. They're all up and down the eastern shore. That was a great presentation. I, I think that's probably one of the avenues that if we're, if we're trying to find funding or finding investments, that may be something we can look, look into supporting more, you know, it, because, you know, we don't want to see that they can't respond to calls. So that's something I think maybe an avenue from my perspective, we should, we should look at to make sure that, you know, people need help, that, that we can find a resource to help them, especially with, with mental health issues. I think that's, that's vital that we support that. So thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, sir. And you're, and you're right. You know, we definitely have the stats to present anytime that they are ready to go for additional funding and it is a staffing issue and it speaks to a larger issue of kind of a resource drain, lack of resources here on the eastern shore, not just in Salisbury, but it's, it's the entire region. Whether it comes to facilities, whether it comes to professionals with, with the appropriate certifications and degrees that can assist our folks down here or even just the regular folks on the ground, such as those belong to, you know, Mobile Crisis. There's a huge lack of resources here. And I think that underscores it. Getting back to your original statement concerning tri-community mediation, you're absolutely right. No one in this task force gets to sit with their back against the wall, you know, arms folded and not participate. You are gonna be brought into the discussion. So we're grateful for that.
Thank you, Mayor. April?
Chief, I commend you as well for your efforts of everything that you do to try to make Salisbury safe. You do a great job. And you know, I'll tell you that a million times. We can move this forward. However, whatever, whatever you need, we're behind you. I am anyway. I'm pretty sure we are all behind you.
Thank you, April.
Thank you very much. You know, and it's, it's considering how much work that all, all of the members, whether there are community members who, who are committed to this process or the members of the agency who are learning a lot themselves. It's, it's really, yeah, thank you for the support. It's much needed because as you well know, these conversations are not easy to have by any stretch of the imagination. And I think, I think when we can all participate in them, I think we get the best results. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Saying it takes a village, it really does take a village. Everybody has to be involved to make this a safer place. We just can't sit back and let things happen without, you know, conscious effort. So again, I support you and as Mira said, Michelle does a great job. I don't care. You can see her a million places. And she's always coming up with some kind of solution of what needs to be done. And she, she's great at it. And, you know, I commend her for all that she does because it's not one place that I haven't been that I have not seen her.
Thank you, April. Michelle?
I just want to know if Michelle Ennis ever sleeps? Like, I'm pretty sure she doesn't at this point. But I, you know, this is, you're right, there are tough conversations and they're the conversations our community needs to have. And I'm really incredibly proud that this community is having those conversations. You know, I saw that, you, you said that the reading materials, the, the participants purchased their own reading materials. They, they spent their own money on that?
They did.
That's awesome.
We, we were just, we were talking about some of the resources that we've used because we've, we've changed up our promotional process and to, to include kind of current day issue reading. And, you know, they, they picked up on it and some of them went out themselves and purchased some of the material that we use as an agency.
Oh, that's fantastic. That's great. Could I get a list of that, like the stuff? Because I'd like to read some of it too. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd love to learn more.
Sure.
Awesome. Yeah, that would be fantastic. And like I say, you guys are doing amazing work and, and getting twenty-six people plus to sit down in a room and, and come to any kind of consensus is nothing short of heroic work. So I, I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing on this.
True. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, I I participated in the ten-week program with Michelle and I wasn't the same when I came out. That's the kind of effect and it was a similar situation to what the chief was talking about, tough conversations. I'd like to respond a little bit to when you talk about resources, Chief. Everything comes down to money. And we have to prioritize. I cannot think during this time of a thing that's more worthy of investment than this type, type of program. And I was also encouraged to see that we're going to do ride-alongs, which is great. I've done them. I learned a tremendous amount from those ride-alongs. And I'm also happy that they're going to the academy. That's going to make a ton of difference as well. And hopefully, when they go, they're open. And maybe the people in the academy who are the instructors will learn a little bit from the people who are taking the course. That always happens. When I was a teacher, I learned as much from the kids as they did from me. And I think that that's a positive. So keep up the good work. We look forward to seeing some of the things come out. I think Julia has a, a comment or she's asking for permission to do something.
I do just have a comment, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to thank
I just wanted to thank Chief and Captain Drure and Michelle, who has jumped on and has been hearing all of the nice things you've been saying about her, for all of their work. This is no small feat. They're, they're putting hours and hours in, and even outside of the meetings, answering questions from the committee members and things like that. So, you know, it's just a testament to the commitment to this department's work in providing, you know, the, the best service and the best police department that the city can provide. And so, you know, just, just thank you to each of you. And Jack, to hit on your point about the Citizens Police Academy, I think it is, it is the right decision to just slow down for a minute, gather those institutional knowledge, and we'll, we'll have a better outcome on the end. I, I believe that 100%.
Thank you for that.
I didn't see that Michelle was on the thing. Otherwise, I wouldn't have sent all those great things about her. But now that we know she's on, Michelle, would you like to make a couple of comments about what you've seen so far on the task force? We'd love to hear.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I think part of what's been, you know, Jack, because of what you've been through, anything with me, the first time, Jack, was ever, we were ever in a meeting, City Council was trying to call it comment about a youth curfew. And President Heath came by my office, and I wasn't really sure what you meant by it at first. But it is like the, the commitment from tri-community mediation is to making sure that there's safe space to hear all of the voices. Nobody gets to cleanly, quietly sit in the back. And, and we're not, they don't even do what I'm doing right now, which is not show my picture, but I'm working my way through COVID, so I'm choosing not to share my face with you guys right now. But it's been incredible. People have all, both community members and law enforcement participants. Everyone has shown up, and, and I have no doubt, people had all kinds of preconceived notions of it. But giving people the space where everyone gets heard, and as a facilitator, insisting that every voice gets heard. I'm just watching kind of the incredible things that we know happen when we come to a place of curiosity, rather than just competitively trying to tell people what we think. And I'm watching that play out in a really organic way. And I'm grateful to be a part of this community and grateful to be supporting these efforts. So thank you to our administration and the people of our community who are making that happen.
Thank you, Michelle. We really appreciate it. That takes care of the items on the work session agenda. And at this point in time, we're going to go right into our special meeting that we have to get some money. So we have two ordinances that we're going to do. So at this time, I'll call the special meeting of the Salisbury City Council on December 7th to order. I would ask that you join with me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? And Mrs. Gregory? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is four zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2631 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is ordinance 2631 is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $14,590, and to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2021 grant fund to appropriate these funds for the purchase of two commercial floor cleaners, walking behind style, and battery supplies. Whereas Wycomico County Health Department received a direct allocation of funds through the federal coronavirus relief funds. And whereas the purpose of the CRF is to help support emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transportation related to COVID-19. And whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department submitted a grant request to the Wycomico County Health Department for funding to assist with the purchase of a commercial floor cleaner walk behind style and battery supply for two of its fire stations. Whereas the Wycomico County Health Department has awarded the city funds in the amount of $14,590. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or approved by the city council. And whereas the appropriation, appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department to accept grant funds in the amount of $14,590, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2021 grant fund budget be hereby amended as follows. Increase the Wycomico County Health Department revenue account by $14,590, and increase the Salisbury Fire Department equipment expense account by an equivalent amount.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions, only comment. I'm still holding Jimmy to the picture of seeing him using the equipment when it comes in.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions, no comments.
I have no questions as well. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2631, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2631 is passed by a vote of four to zero. Jimmy and Chief, congratulations. Jimmy, I, I'll get a copy of that as well. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2632 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, this is Gregory. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Wycomico County Health Department for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $26,274.44, and to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2021 grant fund to appropriate these funds for the purchase of air filters and replacement filters for use in small city office spaces in critical need COVID-19 supplies for the distribution to the public by, by the Vulnerable Populations Task Force. Whereas the Wycomico County Health Department received a direct allocation of funds through the federal coronavirus relief fund. And whereas the purpose of the CRF is to help support expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency related to COVID-19. And whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a grant request to the Wycomico County Health Department for funding to assist with the purchase of air filters and replacement filters for use in small city office spaces in critical need COVID-19 supplies, which will be distributed to the public by members of the Vulnerable Populations Task Force. And whereas the Wycomico County Health Department has awarded the city funds in the amount of $26,274.44. And whereas the city must enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department to find how these funds must be expended. And whereas 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with Wycomico County Health Department to accept grant funds in the amount of $26,274.44, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2021 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the Wycomico County Health Department revenue account by $26,274.44, and increase the operating COVID supplies expense account by $26,274.44.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I have none either, so I will call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2632 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2632 for the first reading is passed by a vote of four to zero. That finishes the items on the agenda. We are now rinsed, ready for council comments. But before we do that, Deputy City Admin, or City Administrator, sorry, Acting Mayor Julia Glanz, do you have any comments for the good of the order?
I do not. I don't think so. Thank you, Jack, and, and thank, thank you all for your continued support for, for our team. It truly is wonderful working with a council like you, so.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Well, it's almost Christmas time, so I know we got another meeting or two before Christmas, but I think we're all getting into that spirit, got the Christmas trees up. So when you're out buying gifts, make sure we're shopping local, supporting our local businesses. Keep supporting our restaurants. And, you know, just hope everybody has a good week.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Um, this is to the Sarbanes family. The City of Salisbury, Wycomico County, and the state of Maryland has lost a great political icon, Senator Paul Sarbanes. The City of Salisbury sends their condolences to you, our heartfelt condolences to you. In whatever we can do in any capacity, we are willing to help you, assist you in any way we can. Our prayers, we send our prayers up and that you know that we love you and we're here for you. I bless you.
Thank you, April. Michelle?
Well, yes, we are a couple of weeks out from the holidays, but I, I just want to remind everybody that COVID still exists. It's still a thing. We're seeing a huge spike in Wycomico County in the aftermath of Thanksgiving. Please, 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 if you're going to insist on gathering, wear masks, even if it's just family in your house. Wear masks, use sanitizer, but most of all, don't, don't gather this year so you can be there for each other next year. Please, there's just, there, there's too much risk involved. So please be careful. Take care of yourself. And yes, definitely support the local businesses because they are hurting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I too want to recognize Paul Sarbanes, a great friend of the eastern shore and of Salisbury for sure. I spoke with his brother Tony this afternoon and told him that the, the council is all thinking and praying for him. And what a great man. You can say, some people liked him, some people didn't. But I will tell you, when, when he said something and he shook your hand, it meant something.
Something.
And that's, that's about the best thing you can say about an individual. So, and Angela is not with us tonight. She has an engagement. I want to, on her behalf, if you can do it, please donate blood. We are still in, in dire need for blood, and it's not getting any better. So we need to do that. And I think the government says, the governor said it best in his recent public service announcement, wear the damn mask. Other than that, thank you, everybody, for your participation, hanging in. It's a long meeting. And I have to figure out how I have to make a run to get a certain commodity that we, we have every year to each of you. We may have a pickup point someday, and I will let you know. Because next, next Sunday, next Sunday, we will, we will be spending the entire day. I'll be stirring something on the stove.
I think Mira was going to climb through the screen there for a second.
I am.
He was going to come get it.
Yes.
With that, with that, we are adjourned, everyone.
Well, I got, I got one other thing. I got one other thing. One person was able to recognize my background. Chief Duncan, your, your reference to pop culture and understanding of pop culture is great. My background's from a TV show from Canada called Letter Kenny. So Chief wins the prize this week.
I, that's why I didn't, I haven't watched it. I have not watched that yet.
Surprise this week, Mira.
Letter Kenny is the name of the show. It's on, it's on Hulu.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We're, we're going to say goodnight, everybody. Take care. Have a good one. Be safe.